Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, November 8th, 2021. The meeting announcement, council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue joining us virtually or as in person, but there will be a limited number of seats in council chambers. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cow Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing from a moment of silence. In our moment of silence, please keep in mind that Veterans Day is this week, and we want to thank all our veterans. And also, please keep in mind Superintendent Moffett, who passed away recently. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. In accordance with the Home Rule Charter, our first order of business will be Mayor William Paduta's 2022 Budget Address. Councilman Kraus and Councilman Lavelle, we please escort the mayor into chambers.
You can if you want.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Paduta, for joining us. Mayor will begin his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I hope everybody is doing well. It's kind of melancholy day. I remember standing here back in 2002 when I was sworn in to office for the first time. It's been a long road. Got to watch a lot of changes occur, not only within the city, but changes as a person as well. A lot of different people that I've gotten to work with, and a lot of different times that this city has gone through. And today, I unfortunately have a pretty long speech. Tried to cut it down over the past few weeks, but unfortunately for every sentence we took out, I think three sentences were added. But what I would like to be able to do is look back over those years and share with you some lessons learned, some of the good times that we have been able to go through together, and basically look at a couple of different areas that go through the guide of the North Star that we pursued over the past eight years, which was P4. How we tried to establish a budget that was created around people, planet, place, and performance, and how those different areas sort of work together, and what the challenges will be for you over the course of the next five years, and some of the red flags to watch out for, not to make the same mistakes that the city made over the course of the past 20 years. Good morning, City Council, President, City Controllers, City Council Members, City of Pittsburgh Directors, guests, and citizens of the City of Pittsburgh. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the people of Pittsburgh. Thank you for allowing me to fulfill my dream. It has been the honor of my lifetime to serve you. City Council Members, it is my privilege to present to you for the last time, next year's operating and capital budgets. Our vision since 2014 has been to equitably improve Pittsburgh through a people-first approach. If it's not for all, it's not for us. We developed the pre-P4 framework that all decisions we make for the city support our people, place, planet, and performance. Today, I'm going to talk about these principles broadly, in terms of what we've accomplished and how P4 can continue to guide equitable decisions. The City-County Building I walked into 30 years ago was a different place. The steel mills, Pittsburgh's economic heartbeat, were shutting down and taking our taxpaying population out of the city. People were losing their jobs, others were abandoning their homes, and the city was hemorrhaging money, and we all needed help. But City Hall was dominated by old-school politics. Political contributions and influence within government was dominated by money. Jobs in departments and agencies providing critical services to the people were packed with staff who were appointed through political favors, not by qualification. At the turn of the century, our economy started modernizing and turning itself around. Yet, because of the financial depression of the 80s and the 90s, we had no tax base to save us, and our spending far outweighed the revenue that were coming in. Despite the work of elected leaders, Pittsburgh wound up in financial distress. We were nearly bankrupt. During my time on City Council, we began a complete financial reconstruction, starting with Act 47. Entering Act 47, financial oversight allowed us to gain direct management from the state. Was it popular? No. After a failed attempt to pass the legislation, it took two years of advocacy to convince colleagues to support it in 2004. Was it the right thing to do for the future of our city? Absolutely. Act 47 introduced controls on spending, restructured our taxes, and implemented other fiscal reforms. As the bill's sponsor during the first recovery plan, the Council Finance Chair during the second recovery plan, and the mayor for the third and final recovery plan, I saw firsthand the realities of our financial instability and the need for meaningful, long-term reform. Although we successfully exited Act 47 in 2008, we, the administration and council, worked together to make the Act 47 fiscal controls permanent. It was a unanimous vote. Since 2014, we have strengthened the city's cash reserves. If something were to happen, we need to be financially prepared, and that shock came with COVID-19. Where other cities had to lay off and furlough staff, we were able to provide continuous services during the pandemic without having to lay off any employees. Our planning and financial resilience allowed us to stay solvent until we received the federal relief that we advocated for with the American Rescue Plan. Despite these relief dollars, our financial recovery will continue to feel the stresses of the pandemic over the next few years. A truly just and equitable recovery depends on rebuilding our cash reserves to be prepared for the next challenge. We must focus on adding jobs in Pittsburgh's new economy and encouraging population growth through developing housing stock. Without the safety net or investment in increasing real revenue, we will find the city once again in financial hardship. Prior to Act 47, the city counted on phantom revenue to pay our bills, leading us to the brink of bankruptcy. We cannot make that same mistake twice. We have also improved our credit rating. Just like for individuals, having a strong credit rating can help cities get better rates or higher limits to issue bonds for critical infrastructure. Prior to my mayoral administration, our bond rating was the same as a junk bond. Today, we have double A-minus rating, the highest in decades. Only with fiscal responsibility, job creation, and population growth can we maintain and work to improve our bond rating. Our employees are the backbone of city operations. Over the past eight years, we have worked together to implement annual pay raises across the board while also improving health care and other benefits. Thank you, City Council, for making this a priority. Yet, working for the city can sometimes be a thankless job. So let me take a moment here to thank all of our city employees and staff for the hard work that you do each and every day. Another way to thanking city employees for their hard work is through strengthening the pension fund. This year, we hit a milestone. Our pension is now funded at nearly 72%, up from 27% in 2010. Thanks to the leadership and partnership of the administration, the city controller, city council, and the pension board, we've increased our investment by contributing more than the state's mandatory minimum obligation every year. I want to be clear that the city must continue to exceed minimum investments into the pension fund. We have employees who commit their whole lives to working for the city, and their families should not be concerned about the stability of their pension because of politics. It would be very easy in the future to go back to just paying the mandatory minimum, but City Council owes it to our valuable employees to avoid that. Finances were just one example of historic, I saw that, thank you, of historic political mismanagement that put the city in a precarious position. Another was Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. In 2014, we inherited a water authority that had been mismanaged because of politics. PWSA was not sending bills, had unresponsive customer service, and a network of pipes that were 100-plus years old with no proactive replacement pan. They did not have a long-term capital plan. They were simply operating day to day. On top of all of that, I found out in my first few years as mayor that there were dangerous levels of lead in drinking water. We needed to provide safe drinking water, a responsible management system. We set up a blue-ribbon panel, changed leadership, worked to get oversight from the Independent Public Utilities Commission, lobbied Harrisburg to replace lead lines, proactively replaced water and main lines, introduced orthophosphate to stop the lead from the pipes leaching into the water. Since then, over 35 miles of antiquated water mains have been replaced. PWSA created a five-year capital budget, introduced a green infrastructure stormwater management plan to complement the EPA-mandated combined sewer overflow plan, and worked to create a complete facilities management plan for a publicly-owned water system for the next 50 years. PWSA is on the path to replace all lead service lines by 2025, having already replaced over 15,000 lines. PWSA's 2021 lead testing levels are the lowest they have been in 20 years. In just eight years, PWSA has gone from hardly functioning to a model of modern service delivery and efficiency through accountability, transparency, and investment. Modernization across all city departments has been critical to our administration. People deserve a government that works for them, not a place to get stuck in red tape. If we take it back again to 2013, PLI inspectors had no cell phones, no email, and were only reachable in the office for one hour and only on certain days. Snow routes were kept in written files. To reserve a park shelter, you had to come downtown on one designated day and line up around the City-County Building. If you were doing a construction project, you had to take a day off of work, bring several cashier checks because you got your building permit at one counter, your zoning approval on another floor, went to another building for your parking variance, another building for your dumpster permit, and yet another place to get your no-parking signs. Inventories of public and private streets were written on note cards, and most institutional knowledge and records were in employees' heads. Today, you can get all permits, licensing, plans approved online. On one-stop PGH, you can pay with a credit card. All PLI inspectors have smartphones, emails, and an online inspection tracking system. We have snow plow tracker, and our plows have tablets with optimized routes. We now have online infrastructure management system to track work on our roads, steps, and other city assets. You can reserve a park shelter from your couch, and thanks to the city's Plannings Engage PGH online platform, community engagement is now 24/7/365. You can get an itemized online tax receipt, and before the end of the year, the Department of Finance will have consolidated seven disparate systems into one user-friendly system so you can track your taxes and pay them online. Modernization efforts have helped our performance in making historic investments in public assets. This has included record investment in paving, bridge, and step repair, landslide remediation, bike lanes, traffic calming, and safety improvements, in accordance with our Vision Zero policy, that nobody is hurt or killed on a public right-of-way. Furthermore, we have created the first integrated mobility-as-a-service project in the United States and the second in the world to connect traditional and emerging low-cost shared transportation options into a single, easy-to-use system. Travelers can find a bus, bike, scooter, moped, car, share-ride using the Transit App or by visiting one of the 50 new mobility hubs throughout the city. Our performance was also improved by the administration's North Star guiding principle of equity. Like other challenges, we inherited a history of investments that were not for all. Redlining created segregated neighborhoods, and these areas were historically and vastly under-invested in the city. We reflected our values in the way that we structured the mayor's office. We had an Economic Development Office, Operations Office, and staffed a focus on the communities who needed support called the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment. My staff provided support to minority and women-owned businesses, small businesses, immigrants, refugees, new Americans, youth and young children, critical communities like veterans, those who are experiencing housing insecurity, and those with addiction and mental health challenges. Our staff worked with our community departments, departments, and authorities to create people-driven plans and benchmarking so we could measure our success, like the Welcoming Pittsburgh Roadmap that took feedback from over 3,000 residents to make a plan we use to guide program and service priorities for immigrant and refugee communities. We became a member of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, making us one of the first cities in the country to put our numbers up against a national scorecard to assure each of our departments was providing real equity in the services they provide in their annual budget requests. In 2019, we transitioned BNE into the Fifth Office of Equity in the nation to ensure our mission of equity was clear. This did two things. One, it institutionalized our commitment to equity and allowed our staff to disseminate and infuse their work with departments and agencies. And two, it allowed us to exchange policy ideas with other cities that shared our goals so we could collaborate rather than operating in a silo. We added policy analysts to our team to make sure our agenda and legislative priorities were equitable. The results benefited the people of Pittsburgh and included creation and expansion of the Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program, which has provided paid jobs for over 14,000 young people. Over 84,000 free books have been distributed to little burgers under the age of five. A $2 million Child Care Quality Fund to give grants to local childcare centers to improve their facilities and curriculums. Over $1.4 million saved and $1.9 million of debt eliminated by Pittsburghers through the Financial Empowerment Centers that offer free financial management for any person over 18. Significant increases in MWBEs being awarded contracts through the Equal Opportunity Review Commission, establishment of the Gender Equity Commission and the LGBTQIA+ Commission, scoring over 100 on the Municipal Equity Index for four years in a row, deployment of a citywide language access plan so that everyone can access city information, no matter the language they speak and/or read. The Office of Equity's Critical Communities Division in 2020 rolled out into the Office of a Community Health and Safety. A person experiencing homelessness or having a mental health crisis does not need the police to be called. They need an alternative responder who can help connect them with long-term care. OCHNS works on programs focused on harm reduction. A partnership with the Allegheny Health Network provides social service coresponders. We are additionally providing victims assistance, expanded medical access, and social work services. OCHNS is also involved in the innovative homeless shelter being built on Second Avenue through public-private partnerships that will offer comprehensive wraparound services for homeless adults and their pets. The Office of Community Health and Safety is becoming a national leader for 21st century public safety and health. We must continue to invest in this office and the vision. OCHNS's work also supports the outstanding work of the men and women working in public safety every day. During the past eight years, we have brought the number of firefighters back up to budgeted levels for the first time. We have brought back the EMT program and expanded the 24/7 coverage of EMS in the City of Pittsburgh. Additionally, our Pittsburgh Bureau of Police has invested in a community engagement office, created the Neighborhood Resource Officer Program, expanded the Community Resource Officer Program, implemented mandatory implicit bias and de-escalation training, and expanded our unbiased policing policy. With these three bureaus and OCHNS working together, we will make Pittsburgh safer for all residents. Part of our original mayor's office structure was also focused on economic development to promote growth and affordability. We need both. We are still feeling the effects of the collapse of industry in the 1980s, when our tax base was nearly 25% larger than it is today. Those who left, left behind abandoned homes and a hole in the city's tax base. But we have rebuilt our economy in education, medicine, technology, and trades that can attract people to contribute to the vibrancy of the city, the economy, and the tax base, which is critical to getting more revenue to invest in our neighborhoods. To be certain, we cannot rebuild our neighborhoods or attract families to the city without creating good-paying jobs. Under my administration, we have seen record investments in market rate, residential, commercial, and affordable development. Downtown has seen a rebirth into an active, burgeoning scene of people living, working, and playing. We have the opportunity to continue to reimagine downtown as a vibrant residential neighborhood. Coming out of COVID, we know the Class B and C office space has suffered. Using the state's ARP funding, we have an opportunity to capitalize on the record demand for downtown housing and can create thousands of mixed-income, green, historic housing units in the next three years and recharge our Golden Triangle with residents. We've brought in Google, Uber, Argo, Aurora, Philips, Duolingo, robotics firms, AI firms, research and development companies, and startups who alone have brought tens of thousands of jobs and people to the city. Building the tax base by creating jobs and improving housing stock helps the city do programs like Rec to Tech. Rec to Tech has taught computer science, AI, and coding skills to over 200 young Pittsburghers, over 80% of whom are Black. By encouraging tech companies to locate here and having the amenities for their workforce, it not only provides additional money for programs like Rec to Tech, but also ensures that those tech jobs will be here for our young people, learning how to be a part of it. Hand in hand with market rate development, we recognize that many people in our city needed access to affordable housing. Affordable housing is more than just a place to live. It's a place to live near a school, a grocery store, a house of worship, a park, and other necessities. We must build more than just housing, but build out mobility networks and accessibility. We need to invest in the ability for people to own their own home and build wealth in their community. For many in our lowest-income neighborhoods, they don't leave because of a lack of housing access. They choose to leave because of a lack of community necessities. If a neighborhood is not safe or walkable for children, families will choose to move to the suburbs to find these opportunities. We saw this exact trend in the 50s and the 60s in white neighborhoods. For the past 20 years, we've seen it in our Black neighborhoods. If we are to lessen the disparity that exists in Pittsburgh, we must first help those left behind, and second, build back the Black middle and upper-middle class that helped to build Pittsburgh. We must invest in Black families staying in the city by prioritizing equitable parks, business district, and mixed-income housing. One of our greatest successes has been the Larimer Choice Project, where 235 housing units have already been developed, with another 99 being developed in the next phase. But those aren't the important numbers. But those aren't the important numbers. In Cornerstone Village, over fifty-eight percent of young residents are participating in high-quality learning. The average earned income of adults jumped nearly seven thousand dollars annually. And there's been a ten percent increase in eligible adults working. Before, only eight percent of residents were in health and fitness programming, but now over thirty-seven percent of the residents are. Support for this vision of affordable housing in mixed-income communities has been made possible through our Housing Opportunity Fund. The city of Pittsburgh puts ten million dollars a year into the Housing Opportunity Fund to offer programs designed to help people stay in their homes, whether rented or owned, help with unforeseen financial emergencies, help homeowners with repairs and upgrades, and also incentivize the development of affordable housing. Affordable housing is just one component of rebuilding our neighborhoods. A stronger tax base also allows us to direct invest, directly invest in black and brown businesses and business districts that we have failed in the past. That's why we launched the Avenue's I Hope Initiative last year to revitalize historic black business districts focusing first on Homewood, Larimer, Center Ave, Perry'sville, Chartiers, Warrington Avenues, and Irvine Street in partnership with the U R A. We look at these seven business districts holistically and help invest public and private support into minority and women-owned businesses, facade renovations using local minority contractors, developing nearby housing and investing in paving, sidewalks, streetscape, vacant lot maintenance, and traffic calming. So residents, families, and visitors can safely access and support businesses. In just its first year, over twenty-four million dollars in public and private investment has been secured in these corridors. Parks have always been a priority for me, and we saw why during the pandemic. Parks are free, open spaces that are good for the mind and body, and everyone deserves equal access to them. We have committed to making sure every Pittsburgher lives within a ten-minute walk to a quality park or playground. That's why my administration has invested over six million dollars in playground updates, including ADA equipment, seven million dollars on fields and courts. In community parks, five million dollars on pools and spray parks, including the new spray park at Paulson and Arlington, and soon-to-be Chartiers in Manchester. Upgrades and improvements to all recreation centers, including Rec to Tech, improvements at all our senior centers, especially the renovations at McGee, Morningside, Beachview, and Sheridan, expanding our urban tree canopy to include more trees in our parks in neighborhoods, installing green infrastructure to capture our stormwater onsite site rather than building more pipes to carry the water to our rivers. And most recently, creating Pittsburgh's largest park, Hayes Woods. The health of our people and our future region depends on our investments in sustainability. Climate change is one of our most imminent threats we face, and we have seen it firsthand in the city of Pittsburgh. We established the Chief Resilience Officer in the Office of Sustainability and Resilience to oversee implementing sustainable operations, clean energy and solutions that promote the long-term success of our region. Because sustainable solutions not only mitigate climate change, they also provide savings to the taxpayers. We created the Climate Action Plan, a six-pronged approach to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and established our twenty-thirty climate targets that we are rapidly achieving, like one hundred percent renewable electricity for city operations, fossil-fuel-free city vehicle fleet, and pension divestment in fossil fuels. We have made it the law that all new ci- city buildings must be net zero or only use as much power as they produce. We've purchased twenty-six electric vehicles, and we'll be using American Rescue Plan funding to purchase thirty-six more, including our first electric refuse and recycling trucks. We are also inventing and investing in solar-powered charging station and electric vehicle readiness across the city. We brought together the Western P A Consortium so that major institutions in the city to join us in purchasing renewable energy to save costs and make our buildings greener. And together, we were able to earn last year's Sustainability Award by the U S Conference of Mayors. We created the Tree Protection Ordinance, updated the Waste and Recycling Code for the first time in decades and are in the process of providing every city resident with a free blue recycling bin. We are helping to develop the largest urban farm in the country in the Hilltop. We deployed smart garbage cans citywide to improve waste collection and route optimization to reduce emissions from collection trucks. We provided funding to the Clean Pittsburgh Commission to aid their work in beautification, litter reduction, and now the famous Garbage Olympics. We will soon be converting our streetlights to L E D to save over one million dollars a year in energy costs and also aid in a healthy, natural environment in accordance with our Dark Sky Ordinance while cutting energy use by forty to fifty percent. Climate change is happening everywhere and is being addressed at the international and national level, but local government is on the front lines of implementation. Our leadership in sustainability has granted us the opportunity to lead on an international stage with Pittsburgh as an example of rebirth in climate action, emerging from an industrial past rooted in fossil fuels. That's why I represented Pittsburgh with hundreds of mayors from one hundred and fifteen countries at the two thousand and fifteen Paris Accords and recommitted Pittsburgh to those accords in two thousand and seventeen. It's important for mayors worldwide to share information and experiences to exchange, adapt, test, and implement ideas on the local level where it has the most impact, and we can get direct feedback from our residents. What Pittsburgh is doing is unique in receiving worldwide attention. We've won several awards in recognition for this work, including the first-place award from the U S Conference of Mayors and others from the Rockefeller One Hundred Resilient Cities Network, Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge, United States Department of Transportation, Smart Cities Challenge, Pennsylvania Energy Development Authority, the Biophilic Cities Network, and Clean Tech Leadership, among others. We have connected global goals to our local communities and local action through our commitment to the Paris Accords, adopting the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, Marshall Plan for Middle America, Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy, Urban Sustainable Sustainability Directors Network, Sister Cities in Icley International Council for Local Environment Initiatives, Local Governments for Sustainability. Earning national and international recognition for Pittsburgh brings attention to the good work that our employees are doing in order to get more assistance and resources. Because of our engagement with the national and international communities, Pittsburgh has served as the location for the very first U S-E U Trade and Technology Summit. And it was just announced last week that Pittsburgh was chosen as the United States site to host the International S E M M I that will bring leaders from thirty-one countries here to see what we're doing and how we're doing it right. Our work has brought numerous visits from Presidents Obama and Biden, Vice President Harris, and numerous Cabinet Secretaries. These relationships with federal and international partners has helped us to bring in over one hundred and ten million dollars in grants during my administration. We've told Pittsburgh's story around the world, and it shows that people believe in what we're doing and are willing to invest in it. One hundred and ten million dollars is a lot of money to supplement our revenues in order to do additional critical projects. Like the ten million dollar grant from FEMA to stabilize Mount Washington Hillside, the future of our region lies in our ability to adapt the changing economy. We have felt the pain of not preparing for deindustrialization. It has taken us thirty years to build a new economy. We created the Marshall Plan for Middle America, calling on investment in Pittsburgh and cities throughout the Ohio River Valley and Upper Appalachia to prepare the workforce and the region to be a global leader in clean energy resources. We must diversify and prepare for a new economic future, in a sustainability future. To our staff and directors, together, we have transformed Pittsburgh in the past eight years. From a city on the verge of bankruptcy and not providing equitable services, we have recognized that our past is not our future and turned it one hundred and eighty degrees to hand it to the next generation who can take it even further. People see the city logo on a shirt or a truck and just think of us as the city or the government. And that's true. But the reality is that the government is made up of individuals who work hard every day to make the city a better place for their neighbors. I want to say directly to all city employees, thank you. You keep the city running and provide the critical services people need. You are the heart of the city, and I am deeply appreciative for all, appreciative to have worked with all of you. To my colleagues on City Council, thank you for your leadership. We are all here because we share the goal to make Pittsburgh a more equitable and livable place for all of our residents. During these past eight years, we have had only one five-four vote, which is a historic accomplishment. We did not always agree on how to move forward, but unlike Harrisburg and D C, we came to the table and worked it out to create solutions. Because of that level of commitment, we have made the city better together. I have led with a people-first vision and structured government through the P four principles. All of our decisions, policies, and investment must support our people, place, planet, and performance. The investments I have presented to you today in the two thousand and twenty-two proposed budgets reflect that commitment to P four. Most importantly, to the people of Pittsburgh, I thank you for the opportunity to be your mayor. Thank you for believing in my leadership and my vision for eight years to help transform your city to meet your needs. It has been the privilege of my life to serve you. I look forward to seeing the next administration build off the foundations we have laid out together for a brighter future for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that we are going to thank, first of all, thank you, Mayor, very much. Thank you for the years of working with you. I have some things to say, but I want to give the members here an opportunity to say something before you leave, and we also will talk about a few other things that we're going to do. But I do want to say that we are going to do something as a council before you leave. But today, I'd want to give our members an opportunity to talk. Reverend Burgess, to start with you.
As the old man on council, we are grateful for your leadership and your friendship. We have put equity and diversity as a forefront in partnership with Councilman Lovell. I am proud of the work we've done, and I think that our work will stand the test of time. Thank you for your friendship and your leadership. I do not think of this as an end, but a transition. I have no doubt that you will be in leadership roles across our city and our country for many years.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, yes, Mayor, I too want to echo thoughts of Reverend Burgess. When I came into office, you know, it's, you're very well-known for your fight on climate change and, you know, more broader national issues, but I would tell you, I am delighted to have worked with you in the past four years on infrastructure needs. You probably don't get enough credit for that, but, you know, every infrastructure project I came to you with, we've basically either completed or are in the midst of working on, so. And you've seen firsthand in some of my neighborhoods, the transformation that has occurred for that. So, so for myself, you know, you've been a delight to work with. I find you very professional, your staff, you know, Chief Gilman, everybody, all your department heads. I've found very professional and very apt to get things done for me, so thank you.
Mayor Petito, thank you so much for your service to the city. I also want to acknowledge that we met, I think it was still maybe two thousand, it might have been nineteen ninety-nine when you were Chief of Staff to Dan Cohen, and I came in to ask you for a letter of support for the Ultraviolet Loop project that I was working on. So we go back that long. And I also want to acknowledge that while I didn't support your candidacy this term, I do look forward to seeing what moves, what you move on to in your next chapter. And I do also agree with Councilman Burgess that I, I believe it that you will provide leadership where you are needed in this next chapter of your life. And I, I just have to acknowledge the, the dramatic changes that have occurred in our mutual careers together and working for change in the city. And I'm deeply appreciative. Thank you.
I still have the hat.
Good to hear it. I have a whole box in my basement.
Mayor Petito, I'm not sure I know even where to begin. It was staggering to watch the presentation this morning and to see the, the brilliance that you brought to city government at a time that it was so very desperately needed. And your, your, your service, your wisdom, your vision, and your commitment to this city will never be forgotten, nor will your friendship and support of, of me through the years and the, the partnership that you and I have built and everything that I've learned from you. I am, I am better for having served with you, and I will always remember your, your friendship and your, your, your kindness and your leadership with great fondness, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mayor Petito, thank you first and foremost for your service. Councilman Kraus mentioned your support of him. I'd be remiss if not, not acknowledging myself that when I decided to run for office, you were one of the very first people to support me, and I'll never forget that, and I thank you for that. And in your remarks, you mentioned that we didn't always agree, which is true. We've had our ups and we've had our downs, but through it all, you were always very consistent and willing to have the tough conversations, willing to have the meetings, willing to sit and think through what we collectively, despite how we differed on how we were trying to get there, I believe our visions were pretty much all normally in line. So I just want to thank you for all that you've done in supporting the work that I've tried to get done. I want to thank you for your vision, your leadership within the city. I want to thank you for the staff that you brought on. To my knowledge, you've probably had the most diverse staff this city has ever seen, and they were very competent and they did great work on your behalf, so I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank you for centering equity and inclusion within your administration. The foundation you've laid will absolutely have a tremendous benefit for our city moving forward. So thank you for all you've done for us.
Eric, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. First of all, I regret for not being able to be there in person today, but I listened to every single word and was with you in spirit. I, Ms. Mayor Petito, I want to thank you first and foremost for your service. I know that you're the type of person who wakes up every morning thinking about how to make the city a better place. And you've shown your devotion over the last several decades of this public service. And I know you will continue your public service in a different way beyond your time as mayor. It's been a privilege to call you a colleague. And similar to others, you have been someone who has been a mentor and someone who I have learned a great deal from. So, thank you for that as well. I think Councilman Kraus used the word that I was thinking of too. It's staggering to hear all in one place, everything that you and your team have accomplished over the last eight years, something that you should be proud of. And I look forward to building upon that foundation to continue to do great work for the city. Thank you for leaving the city in such a solid place for us to continue to work off of. And thank you again for your service.
Well, first off, I'd like to say thank you. As other members were talking about, your dedicated service to the city of Pittsburgh. You know, I can't help to think about, we haven't had that much time to work together. That this pandemic has kind of put a big thorn in that. And, you know, in a lot of ways, the North Side is one that's going to benefit from what you've committed to invested in that place. But then also, the whole city of Pittsburgh is going to benefit from everything that you've done so far. Now, this past pandemic, you know, just like I'm sitting here, I haven't sat here last time or any time before. In listening to everything you've gone over, it's been, you know, quite the accomplishments. But I think most importantly, it's been your, you know, I usually like to just talk plainly, you've just been chipping away at every single part of the city that hasn't worked well. And to see that front and center, it's been, you know, incredible from my angle. You know, my family's been on the North Side for quite some time. And, you know, to see someone that, you know, isn't in like basically an original Pittsburgher, come here, make it your own, and to literally commit every day to making it better is commendable. I mean, you chose this place. You chose to stay here. And, you know, you've chosen a staff that has made this city a place where people are now moving to, businesses are coming. And just like you said in your, in your, in your presentation, you know, all these accomplishments that you've done, it's something that we have to continue. So, I think everyone else has pretty much said all the other accolades that you've accomplished. But I just have to say, on a personal level, we have two more months to work. So, I want to make sure that, you know, we continue that work, especially everything that's coming down the pipeline. So, thank you. Thank you for today.
It's my turn. I'm like the comedian here, okay? I just want to say, you know, we first, obviously, we did not get along, you know, the first time you were elected. And it was so much so that Reverend Burgess and I looked at ways to get you out of office, including turning your position into a manager position instead of a mayor's position. But you didn't have, you had so much support from members, and we knew that you were going to get things done that you wanted to get done. But what I liked is, although we didn't support you, you came and you put Pittsburgh first, and you worked with us, and you built a relationship. And now, at the end, we really respect and thank you so much for everything you have done. It has been amazing. I can't argue, at first, I thought, oh, gosh, did you see all these bike lanes he wants to put in? There's now there's scooters everywhere. I'm thinking, just cut the weeds, okay? But I cannot argue when I see the investment in District Two that we have never had before. And that comes from your leadership and your directors, your chiefs, your staff. But I really have to call out Dan Gilman for the amazing job he does. He is one of the hardest-working people I have ever seen, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I sometimes send him the nastiest text messages, and he responds really nicely, to me at least, and then gets me some answers. I know he's cussing me out behind the scenes, but he gets things done. So, I want to thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for hiring an amazing staff, an amazing team, and thank all of you for everything that you do in the city of Pittsburgh. I also want to thank all the employees for working so hard. And I really want to thank you for getting us through this pandemic. Mayor, I think you're going to go down in history, and people are going to find out shortly after, years from now, I think that they'll find out what an amazing mayor you were and how brilliant you were. I mean, honestly, sometimes I'm thinking, just talk down here. But it was, but you have been amazing and brought so much to the city. So, I want to thank you for everything. With that, I want to say, so the members come up, we have a little something to give you. Members come up. We have a little something from the City of Pittsburgh Council. And then we're going to take a photo with everyone, first with council, then with council and the clerk staff, and then with your staff, if anyone who wants to get in the photo, get a couple photos. But I do want to thank you for everything, Mayor Paduto, for everything. And I just want to wish you well in everything you do. I know you're going on to do huge things. I know you're going to be a leader always, because that's what you were born to be. So, thank. And during a time when you have gone through such traumatic things in your own family, you kept Pittsburgh first. So, thank you for everything. God bless you. Something from us. Well, you have to open. Yeah. I'm thinking, boy, you downed that water pretty fast.
Their real appreciation of your twenty-seven years of service and leadership to the city of Pittsburgh, presented by Pittsburgh City Council. It's got old Billy Pitts coat of arms on it as well.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. I would just want to say, we're going to get some photos. But I do want to say that, thank you to Madam Clark, because she was the one who was shopping so eagerly for the gift. So, thank you, Madam Clark.
Thank you.
We're going to take some photos.
Yeah, I remember this. Yeah?
I'm staying up here.
I'll take the little, whatever that is, brass thing. Mayor, I never update House, no per.
But your directors, is there someone to get on?
Yeah, no numbers.
Is there directors up there or no?
No. You want to adjourn?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is a keeper.
Yeah, we'll go through the numbers during the budget.
Thank you, Mayor Paduto. We have a motion to recess for about ten minutes to give council a chance to rehearse. Second, all in favor? Meetings recessed. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, and welcome back to the recess meeting of Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Monday, November eighth. And we were following a recess after the mayor's budget address. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have no proclamations today. So, our next order of business will be public comment. And our first speaker is Dr. Miller. And I thank Dr. Miller for his patience as we went through this process this morning. I would like to also remind speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. Dr. Miller, would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, The Hill, a Global Intelligence Society national candidate for 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org, which uses twenty-one disciplinary information and intelligence vectors, links to the National League of Cities, the National Governors Association, one hundred ninety-three UN consulates, founder of the Center for Global Studies, International Interdisciplinary, the Global Intelligence Society, and the multimedia global and national intelligence information networks. A concern of this council is clearly this state of the city. Is it more equitable? Is there more equity? Two points, one, the vote in an ideal sense, and secondly, the vote in a practical sense. The vote, ideal, your vote counts. With no vote received showing for whom a citizen voted, any citizen cannot verify his or her vote. The Allegheny County Elections Division, the ACED, will only allow a citizen to verify that he or she voted, but not for whom. So, Ed Gany cannot prove that Ed Gany voted for Ed Gany, e.g. in 2021. Twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen, could William Paduto, with all of his service, prove that any one voted for WP? The answer is no. Citizens, I encourage you to telephone the ACED and ask to come in to check to see if your vote has not been lost or transferred to someone else. The ACED will not let you do that. Your vote, citizens, is not under your control. That is not equity. The vote, in a practical sense, means that your vote should count for what? Since the Democratic Party, DP, used race preference identity politics in 2021 in the mayor competition, Ed Gany doesn't deny this. Ed Gany used race with the DP to elect Ed Gany. Do any of you deny this? This is not equitable. Since that is so, Pittsburgh mayor land will shift from what I view and many view as white massa land under white-faced Mayor Paduto to endland, so many now say, led by blackface Mayor Gany. In any case, it is DP face.
Excuse me.
The government of this city is itself a fraud, and we have no obligation to obey it, but only to oppose it.
Next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi. Please continue.
Hi, Teresa. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Ed Gany. He actually showed up at our town hall meeting and has spoken of his support of Bon Air to Councilman Coghill. The Pennsylvania Constitution says, under political powers, that all power is inherent in the people. And all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where did elected officials get the idea that they are lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? The Pittsburgh Public School Board and administration, along with Gregory Coyle, are creating a controversy. After repeated speeches to the board and city council, they have not dropped the sale of Bon Air School. It is a crime to use the falsehood to vote, create a resolution, sign a sales agreement, transfer a property, or create a legal contract under a misrepresentation. Officials have a duty to investigate and act against a crime when notified. Any official who tells us that we, the people of Bon Air, have no standing in this controversy is against us. This issue has been brought to our neighborhood, brought our neighborhood together, regardless of political party. We have hundreds of signatures on our petitions to prove the community's support for a green space. Significant community concern has been expressed to the Board of Education and the City Council all these months since the announcement of the sales agreement for Bon Air School. Perhaps there is a neighborhood busting plan afoot. Block busting is illegal. Is there any lobbying or unregistered lobbying taking place? Are any special friends of political candidates involved in this noncompliant sale? My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air School building. Do your part for the environment, reduce urban heat, reduce watershed to Route Fifty-One, increase green space to benefit all ages and stages, protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route Fifty-One, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Investigate fraudulent acts by Pittsburgh Public Schools Administration, Board, and contractors. Oversight is needed to avoid bad acts.
Thank you. Seeing there being no further speakers, registered speakers, or no further speakers in chambers, it moves us on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman, good morning.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2174, Ordinance, Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title V Traffic, Article One, Administration, Chapter 503, Enforcement and Control, by adding a new section, Section 50317, Equitable and Fair Enforcement of Motor Vehicle Laws.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2142, Resolution Providing for a Supplementary Agreement with Allegheny County for Local Costs Associated with the Sixth Street Bridge Project and Providing for the Payment of Local Costs Not to Exceed $24,274.38. Bill Number 2143, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for Local Costs Associated with the State Route Six project and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $6,248.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2144, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Fifty-Nine Forty-One Penn Avenue Project, Fifty-Nine Forty-One Penn Avenue. Bill Number 2145, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the 2022 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council Districts All. Bill Number 2146, Resolution Approving Execution of a Deed by and Between the URA and the City for the Cell of Block Twenty-Five A, Lot Two. City for the sale of Block 25A, Lot 2, in the 24th Ward, River Avenue, Council District Number 1. Bill Number 2166, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Submit an Application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Enterprise Zone Designated Program, Council Districts All.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President, but Madam Clerk and Councilwoman Burgess, may I join you as the sponsor on 2174? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2147, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article III, Organization by Adding a New Chapter 141, Offices Generally to Establish the Office of Immigrants and Refugee Affairs. Bill Number 2148, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 169A, Electronic Signatures, to Mandate the Use of Electronic Signatures by City Departments. Bill Number 2149, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts by Repelling Section 16139, Environmentally Preferred Purchases in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section 16139, Sustainable and Socially Responsible Procurement. Bill Number 2150, Resolution Authorizing 24 Open-End Professional Services Agreement with 12 vendors to provide professional services on an on-call basis as required related to professional IT services as needed by the various departments of the city, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the costs thereof. Bill Number 2151, Resolution Authorizing 39 Open-End Professional Services Agreement with 24 vendors to provide professional services on an on-call basis as required related to professional IT services as needed by the various departments of the city, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $250,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the costs thereof. Bill Number 2152, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022. Bill Number 2153, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2022 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation thereof and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill Number 2154, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capitol Budget and the 2022 CDBG Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number 2155, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations and Salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2022 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022. Bill Number 2156, Resolution Authorizing the City to Participate in Applicable Corporative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, Professional Services, or Constructions as Authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the 2022 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2157, Resolution Providing for the Leading of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments and the Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Services of City Buildings and Facilities, and for any miscellaneous services in and for any city departments, and Providing for the Payment thereof for the 2022 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2158, Resolution Authorizing City Council to Approve Intra-Departmental Transfers Throughout the 2022 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2168, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2022 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill Number 2169, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption by Fixing the Rate of Real Estate Taxation for 2022. Bill Number 2170, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemptions, Section 26302, Payment Options, Discount and Delinquencies Penalties. So as to set the payment, discount, and delinquent dates for the 2022 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2171, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246, Home Rule Tax, Section 24603, Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2022. Bill Number 2172, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245, Earned Income Tax, Section 24503, Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2022. Bill Number 2173, Resolution Authorizing All City Departments in Conjunction with the Department of Finance to Enter into Facilities Uses Agreements for the Purpose of Permitting Groups and Individuals to Rent City-Owned Facilities for Recreational and Community-Focused Activities During the 2022 Calendar Year. The City Shall Not Charge More Than $10,000 Per Rental Agreement.
Thank you. And Councilwoman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Councilwoman Lavelle for Councilwoman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Councilwoman Wilson for Councilman.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
I thought she was online.
I forgot she got off. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2159, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City to enter into an agreement with the Change Agent Training for Access to Their Learning Management System and Consultative Assistance to Adap the City Goal Belt Workshop for E-Learning for One Year at a Cost Not to Exceed $18,000. Bill Number 2160, Resolution Amending Resolution 642, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Computronics for the Provision of a Permitting and License and Package at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $255,000. Bill Number 2161, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into a Cable Franchise Agreement and Certain Subsidiary Agreements for Other Services arising from the Cable Franchise Agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Bill Number 2162, Resolution Amending Resolution 138, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City to Revise the Not-to-Exceed Funding Amount $3,531,131. Bill Number 2163, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Technology Modernization Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit of Revenue Into and its Expenditures from the Technology Modernization Trust Fund. Bill Number 2164, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property Article I, Public Rights of Way, Chapter 416, Instructions by Adding New Definitions and Amending Permitting Requirements for Construction Activities, Encroachments, and Mider Encroachments.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Wilson presents Bill Number 2165, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Building under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as Engine Company 28, located at 700 Philbert Street in Shadyside in the 7th Ward of the city. Bill Number 2099, never mind, that's it, 2165.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, have one resolution and one communication. We'll take the resolution first. Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2167, Resolution Amending the Rules of Council Rule 4 Standing Committees, Section 2 and Rule 5 Regular Meetings, Section 1, to Provide for Certain Changes to the Order of Business in accordance with applicable law.
And with the communication.
Bill Number 2099, Communication from Sarah Kenter, Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, Submitting PLIs, amended rental registration rules and regulations dated November 2 of 2021.
I have a motion to red receival file.
Summit.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's just proof. Thank you. And now, when we move on to any unfinished businesses or any unfinished business before council. Seeing none, our next order of business is reports to committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilwoman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 2136, Report of the Committee on Public Works for November 1, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2072, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Receive a Grant from Keep America Beautiful to Implement a Cigarette Litter Prevention Program and Cigarette Litter Stand Placement in the Amount of $15,000. Bill Number 2073, Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with the Efficiency Network for Services Related to City Street LED Conversion at a Cost Not to Exceed $16 million.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman.
Oops, there I am. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate my comments about the LED Streetlight Conversion Bill 2073 from last week. While there was a lot of talk in the media and enthusiasm about where new streetlights need to be added to our existing network where there are no streetlights currently, this bill, $15,900,000 or $800,000 of it, is actually for replacing current streetlights. So this is not the bill for adding streetlights. It does provide $200,000 that I support, that is for studying where and how we go about adding streetlights where they are needed and integrating them into the network. But I feel that we haven't had a full enough discussion about the LED conversion, and while it's been a longstanding concept, and there, I think, are overly optimistic promises from the industry and from the technology industries that are promoting them, there are lessons, cautionary lessons, to be learned from other cities. So I think we should not be rushing into this, and I'll be voting no on it today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? But aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the law?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye on 2136, no on 2073.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
On Bill 2072, ayes seven, noes zero. On Bill 2073, ayes six, noes one.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilwoman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Kraus presents Bill Number 2137, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for November 1 of 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2088, Resolution Providing that the City Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with PSI Services, Talent Measurement and Education for Professional Consultant Services in Connection with Police Officer Recruit Candidate Examination and Selection Services, and Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $180,000. Bill Number 2089, Resolution Providing that the City Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Consultants and/or Service Providers for Professional Services in Connection with Civil Service and MPOETC Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates, and Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $190,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are already not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? But aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the law?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes seven, noes zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Wilson presents Bill Number 2138, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 1, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2093, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 377, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Apply for Grant Funding from the Allegheny County Department of Community and Economic Developments Act 152 Blight Removal Program, to Add Language to Allow the City to Decrease the Amount of the Grant, Allow the City to Accept the Grant Award, and to Spend the Funds.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? But aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the law?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes seven, noes zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Councilwoman Wilson for Councilwoman Strasburger, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2139, Report of the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for November 1 of 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2092, Resolution Creating the One-Stop PGH Permitting Technology Trust Fund, in which a technology fee collected from applicable one-stop PGH permits shall be deposited. The money is deposited, and said trust funds shall be used by participating departments to cover expenses associated with the one-stop PGH permitting platform for ongoing maintenance and enhancements to improve customer and user experience.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? But aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the law?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes seven, noes zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilwoman Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2140, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November 1 of 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2074, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, into the Publicly-Owned Property in the 18th Ward Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, is Block 14, A Lot 247, located on the southwest corner of Sirius Way and Pedro Way, Council District Number 3. Bill Number 2075, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land to the U.R.A. and Amani Christian Community Development Corporation or a Related Entity for the Sale of Block 10P, Lots 25, 26, and 27, in the 5th Ward, Council District 6. Bill Number 2076, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Bill number twenty-seventy-six, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly-owned properties in the Fifth Ward designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Ten K and various lots located on the west side of Elmore Street between Wiley and Webster Avenues, and on the east side of Wooster Street between Wiley and Webster Avenue, Council District Six. Bill number twenty-seventy-seven, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and Fifth and Denwoodie Development, LLC, or a related entity for the seller Block Eleven E and various lots in the Third Ward, Council District Number Six. Bill number twenty-seventy-eight, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and Allegheny Land Trust for the seller Block Seventy-Five L and various lots in the Twenty-Seventh Ward, Council District Number One. Bill number twenty-seventy-nine, resolution approving execution of a deed by in between the URA and the city for the seller blocks Eighty-eight H, Lot One-Sixty-One, various lots, in the Fourteenth Ward of the city, Freak Park Expansion, Council District Number Five. Bill number twenty-eighty, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and Garfield Highlands in the Tenth and the Eleventh Ward of the city, Council District Number Nine. Bill number twenty-eighty-two, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the vacated right-of-way adjourning the publicly-owned properties in the Twenty-First Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-Two F and various lots located at twelve-forty-one Conkle Avenue, twelve-thirty-seven Conkle Avenue, California Avenue between Conkle and Dahlway, twelve-twenty-nine, twelve-twenty-seven Conkle Avenue, Dahlway between Conkle Avenue and California Avenue, nineteen-thirty-seven Setwood Street, nineteen-thirty-five Setwood Street, and Setwood Street at California Avenue respectively, Council District Number Six. Bill number twenty-eighty-three, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly-owned properties in the Twenty-Fifth and the Twenty-Sixth Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-Two D, Lot Two-Sixteen, and Block Forty-Six J, lots Thirty-Five and Thirty-Seven, north side of Bright Red Street between Brighton Road and North Charles Street, five-eleven Chester Avenue, and south side of Chester Avenue, west of Holyoke Street, Council District Number Six. Bill number twenty-eighty-four, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and Hometown Real Estate, LLC, an affiliate of the PNC Bank for the seller of block One H, lots Two-Thirty-four and Two-Thirty-five in the Second Ward, Council District Six. Bill number twenty-eighty-five, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and San Kofa Group, Inc., or a related entity for the seller block Ten P and various lots in the Fifth Ward, Council District Number Six. Bill number twenty-eighty-six, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and Steel City Squash or a related entity for the seller blocks One Twenty-Four K and various lots in the Twelfth Ward of the city, Council District Number Nine. Bill number twenty-eighty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to execute a quick claim deed for any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreement, and instruments conveying as is all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in Block Forty-eight North, Lot Ten in the Twenty-Fourth Ward of the city to the URA for consideration of one dollar each contention upon the mayor and director of finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances, and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of this property to third parties, Council District One.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills, first can I call on Councilman Coghill real quick?
Aye on all bills, and Madam President, if I could register, aye on the remainder of the bills, I have a previous engagement.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And Councilman Lavelle.
Yes, Madam President, excuse me, I have an amendment to Bill twenty-eighty-four, so motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure, so last week, Councilwoman Gross asked that we provide language in our resolution that essentially reflects the covenants in the URA's documents to protect the long-term sustainability viability of the skinny building downtown. The, the protections for this building exists within the contract for disposition as well as the deed and preservation easement, which is in documents that have to be signed between the URA and PNC Bank. However, those documents can't be fully executed until we actually vote on this bill because this is the bill that allows them to execute those documents. So what this amendment does is tie our resolution to those documents in saying that per our resolution, PNC has to be beholden to the protections within those documents, which is why I'm referencing those documents, but they can't be fully executed until we actually take this vote. That makes sense.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, may I, thank you, thank you, Madam President, so I, I'm not getting what I wanted here. I, first of all, would, would have, I hoped, and I did ask the URA, and I, I talked to PNC, and I asked them to not buy the skinny building. We've had many discussions at the council table where council members have said, you know, if we want to historically protect a building, we should own it. Well, in this case, we do own it, but we're going to sell it to a private entity. And it is a six-foot wide building. It is a building that we believe is the second skinniest in the world, you can look it up on a Wikipedia page. It cannot be used for offices by PNC, and they bought up the entire remaining block of that street disguised behind LLCs. And so it came out when they moved into public discussion with the URA about buying the remaining parcels. I believe that, you know, there may be an intention, their intention today to, to preserve the building, I hope that what they say is true, but we could also protect it by not selling it at all. The URA has actually voted to sell the building, is ready to execute. I tried to encourage council to hold this last week so we could get stronger language. I was looking forward to the promise of attaching all of those writers that Councilman Lavelle was referring to, to this document as conditions of the authorizing resolution. Last night, the URA attorney advised against it, we do need to have written authorization or written amendments in front of us today, Tuesday, and we don't have, we have what Councilman Lavelle has presented. And so I, I have misgivings still about the fact that we could have done, we need to do things more creatively, even if they want a control of the building itself. We've now learned, I think, valuable lessons from our affordable housing community, especially around community land trusts, where you can remain the landlord of a property by keeping the deed on the ground under the building, and you can still lease out the structure to someone for even a ninety-nine-year term, and that is how they ensure that their covenants are upheld. Here, we are allowing the bill to go through, and then hoping when the URA does execute the language, which is not publicly available, that we're happy with that language. We're trusting our colleagues there to protect the building, and we're trusting PNC also to be good stewards of the building. I am somewhat assured that these are going to be easements on the deed itself, but I would have preferred that they be publicly available and in our public record at the city council table as conditions for the sale, which we know we, we might have done. So I, I did ask Councilman Lavelle if he was comfortable with the motion to recommit so that we could get to that stronger language, but he did not respond. I gave him the opportunity now to respond.
But we move forward today.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Councilwoman, any other members? Seeing no further comment, the bills are now ready for final action.
We actually have to vote on the amendment.
We need to first vote on the amendment, and all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, the bill's amended, now all in favor of the, the bills, all the bills are ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, but aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the law?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes seven noses zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That brings us on to motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold an executive session on Bill twenty-ninety-one as it relates to a warrant. Also, this afternoon at two PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill twenty-one twenty-one as it relates to naming the park created by the I-579 Cap Urban Connector Project as Frankie Pace Park. Speaker registration will close at noon today, to fill, to register, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight. Make sure you call by noon. And to count tomorrow, council will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, November ninth, at ten AM for our standing committees meeting. The speaker registration for this meeting closes at nine AM Tuesday morning. To register, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call to register for this meeting, the city clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight, and the meeting will be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. And this Thursday, November eleventh, council and clerk offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day, we want to thank our veterans for all that they do, and tomorrow we'll do a proclamation, we waive the rules, council do a proclamation to present to our veterans tomorrow. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members and approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a good.